Okay, as I just said a little bit earlier, Matt's gonna be a few minutes late. So we'll go ahead and get started with the work session. He can be here right on time. All right, first item on the work session is... Oh, we're gonna just start, "Pledge of Allegiance," all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert, can you do a roll call?
Yes, right. David Zucker?
Here.
Buddy Harden?
Here.
Richard Gartner?
Here.
Steve Giardano?
Here.
Justin Collier?
Here.
Matthew Seeds?
Here.
Penny Hanky?
Here.
Dan Montrenack?
Here.
Pete Azawood?
Here.
Do you have a call?
All right, thank you. First item is the Library Journal Design Institute challenge.
Do I put PowerPoint on the screen?
Zach's gonna pull that up?
Back into this, we'll click it.
Yes, sir, just, it's off right now.
All right. What I'm pointing, that's great, great. All right, wanted to kind of get a board, just a quick run-through of a slide deck. More of a shout-out to our team. There was the design, Library Journal Design Institute is a nationwide publication. There's an application process, call for projects that went out. Our team quickly put together an application and submitted it. Julie led that effort. And our project was one of four or five that was selected for further. And that meeting was held at St. Louis County's Clark Family Branch last Thursday. One of the days of floating together. And so what that provided is that we had a nationwide art tech that reviewed information that we submitted and requested a bunch of information prior to the design spread. Went out to the Katherine Lindman branch, and that was staff, talked through some things. And then that whole day, there was kind of a bunch of best practice panels about what libraries can be and what are libraries' role in community. And then led into an afternoon session, a two-hour look at the Katherine Lindman library of reimagining that space based upon all these ideas. And so we got some ideas, and one of the things that we put into our application was let's imagine that branch if the local history and geology was not in that branch, which occupies about 3,000 square feet. That was out of there, what would we use that 3,000 square feet? And that was one of the things that kind of attracted this design team to our project. Seventy-nine slides, I have probably eight minutes, so we're gonna skip through a lot of these. And if you want a deeper dive, I will definitely feel free to bring it in.
Whoa, Clyde.
There we go. All right, there was a quick agenda about introductions, about the design firm, library build community, design innovation, the shret. We're just getting really down to the shred, but a big part of this was that library buildings, as you look at our buildings, they're pretty much standard boxes. Other than really Spencer across the way, is that a library building really becomes a gathering spot. It's that civic building and should reflect some of that civic pride that we have in our community. And so a lot of the examples that were brought up were kind of reflecting of that. This is talking about the design team that we were working with, different projects they worked on, library as community, civic presence, different examples. So we're gonna like said skip through this because I know we have shorter time. Outdoor space, we found this as example with Spencer when we did the cover patio, that really having that outdoor space associated with library really helps us expand programming. They hit upon that in a lot of detail within this red, that really it's the outdoor and indoor space that marrying those two together really are having a powerful play in library, libraries across the nation. This was giving examples of patio where you can have the programming that can extend out in families. So examples of that, once again, just flying through these. A safe needs to be walk-in and avoiding, so when you walk in the building, that needs to be kind of intuitive. And that's kind of the lesson learned that we learned at, with our renovation at Mid-Port Pudel. It's more open, the shelf's heist came down, the Ask Us desk is in the middle. So you walk in the building, if you know you need help, it's there. If you're looking for a hole, it's immediately to your left. Self-checkout's right there, public computers, it's very intuitive space. So they really emphasize that importance of having a welcome, safe, intuitive space. All right. Choices of writing, all libraries are different. This was looking at different ways of having conference in those work facilities. Health and well-being, again, bringing that outdoor in. Inspiring, we never, we may not have the money for this, but it did go something dream and aspire to some of these grandiose spaces. This was kind of interesting. This is a classic tech, a play on the cardboard box. And having that in a kid's area where it kind of has a cutout and you see it looks like kind of a natural little play for a cardboard box, creating that imagination, again, inspiring play. Patron space, this is very specific space that really designed for unique uses that they brought examples of. Community-driven space, this was an interesting concept, and actually we'll hit upon this later. This is called a family gathering area. So it's kind of a bridge between the children's area and the adult collection. And so they call it family gathering because the book collection there would be a little more varied, some comfy couches, and those activities that kind of is that spot where families could gather in between, kind of that bridge between sections of the library. This was showing how you can have that kind of multipurpose space. And this one it actually had instant pot cooking, and, but you can see the wall would retract so that space could be used in more of a flexible use, multiple use. Again, other examples of really community-driven spaces. This was a, one that was more for our local history and an area. So you can see there's a more of the interactive displays that were brought into it. So kind of bringing some of that museum-type elements within the library to highlight its collection. This was a unique desk design for parents that have young kids that are trying to work on a computer, having that space there that they can kind of have a play zone for the kid, but yet have that quick overview. Where do we start? Point of this is where we start is having conversation. And that really was the point of last week was have that conversation with our team. Design challenges, hitting into exactly the Katherine Lindman branch. Here were some of the things that they pointed out that, you know, we have in around Katherine Lindman, we have a changing population. New development with Newtown, Charlestown, all of that development to the north is bringing a lot of new families in. But yet we have the traditional neighborhoods around Katherine Lindman that are quickly changing around it. We have passports, notary services at that branch. We have areas provide social services, diapers, lunches, unhoused. The main entrance is not fully accessible, not really walk-in either. Poor visibility, lack of a single occupant toilets. So it was designed when you didn't have that single occupant, and we actually kind of think that there's not even potentially ADA accessible toilets are challenging, they're close, if they are, they meet the definition. Lack of adequate power and data throughout the facility, insufficient study rooms, reconsideration glass walls, and the teen, the teen area with the glass walls really cut that off. You've been in there. High shelving, poor sideline, noise, and wifi in daylight. So those were some of the challenges when they walked through the facility, they came back and said there are some challenges of that building. Some of the goals was really that renovation, reviolation through renovation. I passed it up. There you go. Want to hit this for those board members that may not remember, the original building was in 1982. That's in the light blue. Everything around the building were subsequent expansions. If you remember the building from '82, the front door was actually on the top-left corner. Now it's to the bottom, top-left, bottom-right currently. Building is bringing in current spatialization. You can see where local history and geology is kind of in that corner. The teen section that they talked about creating that challenge, that's the glass walls that kind of right in the middle of the building, which really kind of block and makes the field building feel like it's two different buildings, two different halves. You can kind of see that, kind of this is one half of the building. Large print, kind of that bridge between teen section is just to the left of this picture. Actually, teen is to the right, sorry, if you're looking at it. This is within the teen area, this looked on the public computer down to local history. Design challenge, here's what they came up with, the kind of some basic ideas. This was just, again, this is high-level, quick insight of what they would throw out things. You can see that they're looking at if you're, if we were gonna do something to this facility, you potentially could kind of repurpose some of that asphalt in front of the building to make a courtyard. The front door being where it's at, we came right to the, immediate to the left, they have a bunch of study rooms. So those study rooms would have that visibility through the glass out into the courtyard, kind of creating that indoor/outdoor space. You walk straight forward, they show that that's where the main Ask Us desk would be. And then the middle section of the library where the teens used to be would kind of be that open seating, an area for new books and browsing, that kind of family collaboration area, kind of bridging that gap. They made the meeting room at KL bigger, that's one of the things I've heard is that the existing meeting room is too small. And then downward local history and geology is expanding a little bit into the current adult section. It's kind of revisiting that what the adult collection really look like in that area. That's kind of showing the kind of pattern. And that was a highlight of the shret, but I just wanted to give you that. Two big takeaways from this is that a great job to our team are putting together an application quickly. And that there was actually some good takeaways from being selected, going through the process and kind of given us some thoughts about should opportunities come in the future, how we could actually revision that branch. Any questions? Seventy-nine slides and less than...
Pretty good, dude.
That's pretty, that's pretty good, John. All right, thank you for that. The next section will be the, our next topic is the Missouri Public Library standards on the finances. And then it looks like we have the overall scoring summary then of all the sections. We've been through them all.
Can I just comment about the, since we're on Katherine Lindman? Is anyone taking a look to make sure that the city complied with what our agreement with them was? I drove through there yesterday and I couldn't remember what the, last week, and couldn't remember what our agreement was when they put the new sidewalk in in front. And it looked, everything looked pretty tight to me.
In terms of the entrance? Weren't they going to expand the entrance? Yeah, I thought so too, I have not been by there.
Okay.
They have, they have expanded it.
They did expand it, okay.
The bump out is what we weren't expecting.
Yeah.
When you're coming down to Philly.
Maybe that, that's why it looked real small to me.
So I think John was going to possibly address that, or did you take a look at it?
I took a look at it, I mean, the city, they did it to try to slow traffic down and they're obviously encouraging more bike and pedestrians on the roadway. But Aaron, have they finished both sides of the concrete or just this one side's still gravel?
They have put the asphalt on, they finished that, I want to say, end of last week, beginning of this week. There's still cones and things up, but there's, the gravel's covered over now.
Okay, so they finished the paving. Now whether it was exact dimensions, I have not personally measured, I don't think we have.
Yeah, I didn't either, so I couldn't remem, I looked through my stuff and couldn't find it. So maybe we want to take a look at that.
I think the entrance is what we expected, because they took a parking space from one side. But I think the concern is that that bump out, that someone's going to hit it. It is intended to slow traffic, it's just that, yeah, so we wish they'd come down there.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. All right. Julie, want to hit the highlights here?
Sure, I can approach it the same way we've done with the others, where we're talking about the no's. So the yeses unless you've got questions about the others. I think there's five no's on here, so if you start with the income. 2.1.6, references, having a voter-approved operating property tax rate of 30 cents or above, and per capita rate of $60, and we don't have that. Our current approved, voter-approved rate is .26, and we're at about $56, I believe, per capita. So we do not, had to answer no to that. And then 2.1.7, library staff apply for and are awarded five or more grants per fiscal year from private or public funds. We normally have one to three grants that we apply for each year. We see, last year in fiscal '25, we actually had five different grants, three from the federal government, including the activity fund, which was $600,000 for hotspots. So our, our team did a great job with applying grants. And 2.2, budget and expenditures. 2.2.11, the library has a financial plan with a long-range planning instrument that includes recent analysis of community political and economic factors that could impact the library. We do not have a current one, but that is something that we will be developing, excuse me, in this day of the library that John will be doing, he's going to reference some of the items, economic, et cetera, political, that are happening currently, which will inform the long-range plan that we need to develop. So, work on that. And then under, oh, sorry, reserves, 2.3. Under exemplary, the library district maintains operational reserve funds to cover 75% of annual operating budget for gaffe expenditures, emergencies, et cetera. We do not, that would be a $25 million budget, that would be $18.75 million. I can't imagine many library districts are funded that well as far as the reserve in general. funded that well as far as the reserve in general. Anywhere. Okay. Under insurance. There's no under, uh, library district maintains separate funds to specifically, uh, cover all deductibles and insurance co-payments. We do not have a separate reserve for that as far as the, them not being material, as far as, uh, property deductibles, things like that that we'd have to meet. There's really no need to separate that out. If we were a fully self-funded health insurance situation, we certainly would have a separate reserve for that, but we're not currently.
Julia, I just want to go back to the reserve, um, item, just so that folks are aware as they're looking through the financial report, um, and the regular meeting upcoming. Even though the general fund balance will show on fiscal year twenty twenty-five that we, uh, ended with uh, thirty point seven million in our fund balance. Not all of that is available as reserves.
That's correct.
And can you maybe just explain a little bit of, of, of what is available as reserve and then why we have that difference?
So they refer to GAAP expenditures. So as of August thirtieth, when you talk about GAAP, that means our fiscal years July through June. So first of all, it's like we are funded on a calendar basis, so we don't receive our fiscal twenty-six funds. Twenty-some-odd million dollars until mid-January. So when they talk about a GAAP funding, uh, right now we need nine million dollars to fund that, um, from the end of August through mid-January. So there's nine million there. We came up with the, uh, forecasting of our capital needs that you saw at budget time. That was through fiscal thirty-one, uh, twenty thirty-one. Uh, that amounts to eight and a half million dollars. So that sits in our reserve as well. So that alone is almost eighteen million. Um, so that's a start. We also need approximately five to six million as far as our emergency reserve for any thing that could pop up, that nature. Beyond that, that is our reserve and we have, if you look at the capital outlay from year to year, we have been using our reserve, um, quite a bit without projecting forward. So.
Let me ask a question about that. So if we designated a capital fund um, and moved the money from reserves to the capital fund. Essentially what we're, I mean, we're, it's the same dollars. We, we've, we've allocated them to capital, but we're using the reserves to pay for it.
Correct. So we actually, if you look at our policy, we do, um, have a setup for a general fund and a capital fund. The amount just hasn't been transferred. It requires a lot of journal entries, et cetera. So that's the only reason that it has been done to date, that we can certainly go through that.
But you, but the statement that you said that we're using reserves to pay for capital wouldn't be true in that scenario if we had the money, we took the money from reserve and put it into the capital.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be segregated out and that's a situation where the board can always transfer something back into the general fund if need be and.
So that was kind of my next question. Was there not truly restricted in capital?
You, yes, you determine, the board determines what those funds are, whether they're truly restricted or more flexible, where you're moving them around.
Excellent.
Does that help?
Any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you, Julie, on that information. All right. So then I guess we have the total, um, of all the different sections. It's a little bit difficult for me to read just in terms of, um, you look at each section, I'm just going to look at section one, for instance. We have exemplary, it says yes, eight. Percent sixty-seven. So we're saying sixty-seven percent of the items are yeses. So I've got to reverse into the no's, how many no's those are. I get the no's, just how many no's per section. I mean, it's, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's easy when it's a hundred percent because I can do that math. That's all of them. So, uh.
Right.
I think it's the, it's not as a whole, it's the, I'm reading. It's of the essentials where at eighty-eight percent or a hundred percent.
Correct. So how many are the, how many total items are there in each se, in each area of each section? Is my, that's my, that's my point.
The report card doesn't, it didn't show it that way.
Right.
It does, it, yeah, it doesn't click. But I, I do have the breakdown. Okay, sure.
Yeah, perfect, no problem. It's not like critical, uh, take your time. So. Just, you know, when I'm up changing a baby through the morning or something like, I just, you know, read a document.
Sure, the file wasn't there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, your team. Uh, any, any questions related to this document on the total section?
Just a point of clarification on item two point one six.
Yes.
It's, it's, look, it's indicated as no. Property tax rate of thirty cents or above, minimum supportive sixty dollars per capita. But I thought, I heard you say that we are actually at thirty-six cents, twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
They're approved.
Okay. What, sixty-six dollars per capita?
No, fifty-six.
Fifty-six, okay. Mr. Multiple numbers, thank you.
There's a, I want to make sure that everyone realizes, all of the voters approved twenty-six cents per hundred. Because of Hancock, we're at sixteen cents. Forty-five is what we budgeted, but I think what we're going to be at is sixteen, sixty-eight. So nearly ten cents less per hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Than what the voters authorized because of Hancock and the rollback associated with that.
Is there any prospect of resolving that? I mean, that's been a recurring issue.
It would have to go out to the voters.
It would have to be a vote. Okay.
We would have to approve something to send to the election authority to place something on the ballot. So we would have to decide if we want to engage in that effort.
Okay.
So. Okay. Any other questions? Use like two minutes of questions. That would be really helpful.
So, so what would that look, um, would that be a, uh, would that be a vote to reauthorize the twenty-six cents?
Well, I think we could choose any, any amount.
Well, I, I know, but I mean, uh, I, I don't understand because we're, we're currently authorized to go to twenty-six, but you can't because of Hancock. So what, you'd have to go to forty or something like that and then have it knocked down again?
Um.
Doesn't make sense.
That's a good question. That's above my base.
So I.
I don't know the answer to that.
I, I mean, the, the easy, the easy answer to that would be telling your, telling the board, okay, let's, you, you already approved twenty-six cents.
Right.
We're asking for twenty-six cents.
So most of the, most of the time, the way I've seen it is like an increase of a quarter of a percent. So let's say we're at twenty-six and we'd be authorized up to twenty-six and a quarter and it would just add on to the what we're working on. Yeah, it's more my, yeah, my thought processes, but.
Yeah.
I've never, I've never dealt with.
I'm going to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think if the voters are asked to approve twenty-six, we were at sixteen and change. That's a
That would make sense, wouldn't it?
Ten cents per hundred dollar tax increase.
Right. Right.
Then, you're right then. As property values grow, the Hancock Amendment, it will pay newly approved twenty-six cents.
That starts a new base for us.
Yeah.
Right.
That would be an additional nine-ish million dollars a year for another ten cents, so.
Maybe a little bit more than that.
Yeah, so.
Sixteen, we're at twenty-four.
Right.
Eight would be twelve, so it would be.
Oh, yeah, it'd be more than that, okay.
Be more like fourteen million at ten cents.
Yeah.
And that'd be a way to sell it if you're, if that was the way to do it.
Sure.
That would be essentially, uh, be a ten cents increase, but essentially be restoring the levy to the previous nineteen ninety-five approved amount of twenty-six cents. Yeah.
Don't tell me, I mean, tell the people, the public.
Do you have two minutes for you?
Oh, we're past that. Perfect. Uh, well, if there's any other further questions, we'll go into the regular agenda. Um, I will, um, entertain a motion to suspend the regular agenda in order to hold the public hearing and to receive public comments regarding the setting of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rate for the library.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I move that the regular agenda be suspended for the purpose of holding a public hearing to receive public comments on the setting of fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rate.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those? It appears to have it. The ayes do have it. I will now entertain a motion to open the public hearing to set the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rate.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing to set the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rate.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call then?
Yes. David Zucker?
Aye.
Buddy Harden?
Aye.
Richard Gardner?
Aye.
Cindy Giordano?
Aye.
Justin Collier?
Aye.
Matthew Sebs?
Aye.
Penny Hankey?
Aye.
Dan Motternak?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is open. We'll have, um, members of staff, uh, talk about the tax rate, um, how it was determined with the assessed valuations. And then we'll open up the floor to the public, um, for their comments related to the tax rate.
So included in your packet, one of the sheets, let's back up to March. We projected the tax rate, we projected that at point one six four five. That is the, uh, revenue that we use to set fiscal twenty-six. So since that time, we received, um, the updated property tax rules, which is this B O E document, this is received from St. Charles County each year. So that is used in order to complete the pro forma. St. Charles County does that and that's forwarded to our Missouri State Auditor's office. You take a look at it and that's, uh, how the information comes through and the, uh, tax rate ceiling is determined. When that is done, I prepare a notice of public hearing and that gets posted at all of our branches. That has to be posted for seven days. Which we did. So that's the normal process, is part of this. I'm going to back up to, because there's extra thing that we did this year because of, uh, an error that was made. What was I going to say? Uh, this information, I apologize, uh, the pro forma information is used to create the other spreadsheet, which shows you that for the year, um, we're estimating point ones, not estimate, this is the tax rate ceiling, the point one six six eight. How that was determined after using the tax rates, um, or tax rate and, uh, let's see. The, sorry, John, two shot, two sides of the paper. A consumer price index is the two point nine percent that was used in this as well. John was referring to, um, Hancock Amendment. So basically when that maximum tax rate, or the tax rate ceiling is set by Missouri, um, it is a greater of five percent, the Hancock or, uh, sorry, the lesser of the five percent or CPI. And they have it in the pro forma this year is two point nine percent. So that is our cap. That's what was figured in. The other thing that is excluded from calculating our revenues is new construction of real estate. That's this large one hundred sixty-seven million dollar figure that you see cycle on this form that comes out of the calculation. So calculation would have been easy. We delayed this meeting because we were notified by St. Charles County that on the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two pro formas that they prepared, that there was a clerical error. So they were missing seven A, which is this common assessed value of property locally assessed, real estate. That was omitted from two of their pro formas. So as a result, they forwarded us the, uh, this Form G that we had to, um, confirm and attest to. And it shows from twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. Since the pro forma was incorrect beginning in twenty-one, they had to roll it forward to twenty-four. And what that did was it affected our rates from twenty-one through twenty-four. So the first two years, it was a point one nine oh eight that we had collected revenues off of and the, for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, uh, it was point one seven two eight. So when they went back and they recon, uh, refigured the pro formas, they basically created new tax rate ceilings for us for those years. And that's where you see the point one nine oh seven for the first two years and then two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four is the one, point one seven two seven rate. So in essence, that created a liability for us because we were given to this revenue. So that is the calculation on Form G that you see is a total of, for our library, we owe forty-eight thousand dollars. So when you look at our pro forma, I have handwritten in here, in order to recoup that, the tax rate ceiling calculated by Missouri State Auditor is the point one six seven one. We have to pay back the forty-eight thousand. In order to do that, the minus point zero 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 three brings it down to the point one six six eight. That means that we'll pay, we'll recoup the forty-eight thousand in one year, fiscal twenty-six. So, um, this is twenty twenty-five, it's an odd, it's a reassessment year. So we can roll that back and it has no effect because, um, if it were an even year, then we would have to concern ourselves about whether we'd have to stick with that tax rate next year. But since it's an odd year, we can go back up for twenty-seven to the tax rate ceiling that's calculated for that year.
Okay, so this, the point of zero 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 three will be a one year?
It's just a one year.
Yeah, all right.
Recoupment.
Perfect.
Be done with. So I know I, so what, in a short period of time. So I'm going to let you ask questions.
So this was the county's mistake?
Right. They found it, uh, one of their auditors was doing a separate project and just happened to find it, so.
Any other questions from the board at the moment? Okay, uh, we'll open it up to the floor for questions. We have two speaker cards related to this. Um, first, we'll have Brian Rorner. And there is no time limit for public hearing, so.
Finally. Finally, someone got you to talk about fixing this library's income problem. Been gripping up about this for a couple of years now, I think. I kind of wish it would have been, you know, the employees coming in here and asking for fair pay to that guy you talked about. Kind of wish we talked about it a little bit before we start cutting services, but I'm glad you started. So please do continue that discussion. This point one six, nah, enough for this county. It's causing our employees to suffer, it's causing your county to suffer. We can do better. We need more branches out west in Onesville, maybe up north now, we're expanding north as well. We need, I want more hours. We used to have exceptional hours at this library. If you cut them back, we can get those back. You want a number, point three three? Take this number, double it. I'll pay for it. I'll gladly vote for that. I, I would like to hear a commitment from the board to schedule some type of working session to have a real, serious discussion about this. Because this is in my mind, an urgent issue. We've cut services a little bit. I don't believe those cuts are all that's coming. I want to nip them in the bud. I want them cut off before they hurt us some more. Please do a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Arne Dinoff.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, uh, members of the Board of Trustees, my name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, counting public advocate. And I have a different view on taxes in the way that, um, St. Charles County people are taxed than the previous speaker. Uh, first of all, I want to start out by saying, uh, all St. County residents currently pay anywhere from fifty-four percent to fifty-seven percent, uh, of a tax, a government tax or a fee at the federal, state, county, local level, special district level, and then we have other things called community improvement districts, transportation development districts, neighborhood improvement districts. We also pay an additional one percent, and in some cases on Wentzville Parkway, we pay two or three percent additional taxes in terms of sales tax portion. I believe that our county is growing dramatically. Um, our assessment, our assess valuation, our homes are dramatically increasing at a concerning pace. Over the last decade, St. Charles County residents have seen their homes double in the value of when they bought their homes from ten years ago. Thank heavens, we have Hancock, and thank heavens that Hancock is being, uh, admitted into the setting of this tax rate and this tax levy to keep some type of, um, continuity and some type of, uh, the same tax revenue of last year to this year's, uh, revenues. Our county is seeing growth from seven to twenty-eight percent across the county, and in most cases, a minimum of seven percent to fifteen percent is what the majority of St. Charles County residents have seen. Now, when it comes to new construction and new commercial construction, uh, for this year, we see an increase of one hundred and sixty-seven million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And for the last, I'm going to say, five, six, seven years, I've asked this board, and the, the president of the board brought it up, uh, I'd like to see the creation of capital improvement fund. I'd like to see you do the same thing that the city of Wentzville, in their wisdom and their auspices of the Board of Aldermen and the mayor, where they build public buildings and they pay cash because they saved for it. We have eighteen million dollars left over in this current fiscal year, or from the previous fiscal year that went into effect July first. The city of Wentzville has built a public works garage, and they paid cash. They built a brand-new, state-of-the-art community center, they paid cash and had zero debt. They're building a police station, uh, in the coming year, in two thousand and twenty-six, and again, they're going to pay cash because they saved their revenues, they saved their income from sales tax and real estate tax and personal property tax, and they're paying cash. I ask you to do the same thing for our future building needs, our future building renovations, our future construction of a new library branch, like the previous speaker said, which I totally agree with, uh, that needs to be in the western part of the county, or the southwestern part of the county. But right now, we're set up with eighteen million dollars, and I feel if we, if we're on that fiscal path, that we could pay cash without any debt, without any bonding, without any six or seven percent, possibly five percent, because we have, uh, a, a large scenario. And so, when it comes to the setting of the tax rate per one hundred dollars assessed evaluation, I would ask, uh, the recommendation of the, uh, key financial officer, um, is currently, uh, for this fiscal year to you as a board, her recommendation is point one six eight of one hundred assessed evaluation. This year's rate, uh, for two thousand and twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-four rate was point one seven two seven. I'm recommending that taxpayers deserve a break. Senior citizens, people on fixed incomes, which is a growing part of our seg, probably the biggest growing of our, uh, segment population, is senior citizens over the age of sixty-five in our county. And they deserve a tax break. I went to the tax collection sale back in August, and I saw senior citizen homes who had their homes paid off were being sold on the courthouse steps by our county collector because they couldn't afford to pay three thousand dollars, or in some cases, less than two thousand dollars of real estate property tax, and was sold to a speculator, or somebody who wants to put in a renter, and kicked that senior citizen to the curb out on the sidewalk. And so, I deserve, residents of our county deserve a tax break, not a tax increase. And I would recommend that we assess point one six zero zero per one hundred dollars assessed valuation. Those are my comments, Mr. President, and I appreciate the indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Seeing no other speaker cards before us for the public hearing, um, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, there's a roll call though, please.
David Zucker.
Aye.
Buddy Harden. Richard Gardner.
Aye.
Cindy Giordano.
Aye.
Thank you. Justin Collier.
Buddy's an aye.
Aye.
Matthew Sees.
Aye.
Penny Henke.
Aye.
Dan Montrenak.
Aye.
Hazel Wood.
We got you Buddy, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, and now I will, I will request a motion to resume the regular agenda.
So moved.
You have a motion or a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? As per to have it, the ayes do have it, we're back into the regular meeting. Um, I first want to take a moment to introduce our newest member of the, um, Library Board, Penny Henke, um, who was appointed by the county executive few weeks ago, maybe, a month ago now? Who knows?
Maybe a week ago?
Oh, a week ago, alright. It was, it was right before our last meeting was in, intended to happen, um.
It was the, I believe.
Yeah. So, welcome, um, yes.
Indeed.
Yeah, thank you.
Hope you enjoy it. Um, the pay is zero.
Yeah.
And, um, and we do want to say thank you to, um, Renee Tillman, um, who, who replaced on the board, and we'll have a, um, uh, resolution, um, honoring her for her time on the board later tonight. We wanted to start off by welcoming you and hope you enjoy. Alright, we will jump into reports and correspondence. Is there any?
Oh, me?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, I'm sorry. Oh, great, great, um.
Or, we'll be joining shortly.
Okay, so, first we have, I'll say non, non-related?
Uh, agenda-related.
Agenda-related first, alright. Agenda-related first, we have Mr. Dinoff, and then you can follow up, just give, when you give him six minutes, and you can follow up with your, um, non-agenda items all at once.
Thank you very much again, Mr. President, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, County Public Advocate. First, I'd like to, um, start out by saying, um, I'd like to thank Renee Tillman for her years of service. Although I rarely agreed with her philosophy or her, um, running or governance of the board, um, I just want to tell, tell her that I thank her for her public commitment. Uh, as the president said, I was kind of joking back there, uh, it's a zero pay, zero benefits, kind of like the school board type atmosphere. So I applaud anybody who, uh, puts in the time and effort and the stress and responsibility that's on your shoulders to be a good public servant and do the will of the people. And so I want to, um, give that, um, greatness of gratitude to Renee Tillman. Um, I believe she served on the board, I'm going to guess, probably eight to ten years. Uh, I didn't actually read the resolution, but you know what it was?
Five.
What was it, five?
Like twenty, twenty. Correct.
Years. So, I appreciate her service to St. Charles County and to our city-county Public Library District. Uh, the next issue I'd like to talk about is two things on the agenda, you know I'm a big, uh, proponent or a big opposition unless you're going to bring a lot of jobs and really stir and, and make our economy a better place here in St. Charles County and come to the table with a real substance, real generating, um, changing our economy. Um, Acxiom Packaging, uh, is using Chapter one hundred, uh, tax abatement with the City of St. Peters. I'm glad that staff sent a letter to the mayor and to the city administrator of the City of St. Peters, and I see the correspondence received back from August twenty-sixth. Unfortunately, I cannot make that public hearing of the St. Peters Board of Aldermen, but again, it's a packaging company, and they employ few to, to little peo, to know people. Um, I believe if I read this pers- perspective, I think they were trying to employ twenty-five or twenty-eight, uh, folks, um, and that's not a mastercard, uh, where they're employing today over seven thousand folks who live here, who generate to our economy, and who are giving back to the community. Another project is the City of St. Charles, which I did attend the St. Charles City, uh, Council Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and opposed the use of, um, uh, uh, funding. Uh, the city owns the building and leases it back to Clement Management Services, L C E. They're going to sell parts to their other, uh, parts of their other dealerships throughout the area, and they're really not going to generate or, uh, generate economic development. They're supposed to employ five to eight people is what's in the perspective, uh, prospectus, um, and they want a thirteen million, six hundred thousand dollar, uh, bond at a low interest rate on the backs of the City of St. Charles and the backs of taxpayers who were, um, held liable if something goes, uh, belly up or if they would file bankruptcy. They do want sales tax and use tax exemptions, which amount to two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That will not affect our city-county Library District, but again, I would ask the administration and the Executive Director, Mr. Kreishew, to continue to fight not only here, but in just the city, to change the laws for special districts of C I Ds, T D Ds, uh, N I Ds, and especially fight tax abatement and the use of, um, bonds at low interest rates when companies can afford it on their own back with their own profits. And then I want to move into other agenda items, um, when you look at the budget, I don't know if anybody on the board is aware, or the new Executive Director, but we have a contract, and it kind of hits the sore thumb, um, uh, with me. We have a contract with a plant company to, uh, provide each branch, I believe. All branches have some type of plants or foliage, and they come in and maintain that on a weekly basis. They do the watering, they do the trimming, they do the pruning, they take care of that. And it was told to me, I haven't asked staff to see the contract, but I understand it's a, it's a, I don't know if I call it substantial, in the scheme of things with our, uh, overall budget, but why are we paying a plant company to come in and water the plants either once or twice a week? Why can't we have staff do that? I, I just don't understand. I'm a big plant person, I'm a big outdoors person, I enjoy plants, I get it. But why are we paying a private contractor, uh, with a huge, uh, profit margin, uh, to come in and do that when I think our staff or custodial people, our maintenance people can do that, uh, as part of their responsibilities? And so, we're looking ways to cut budget, as a previous speaker had said. We're trying to increase staff benefits and staff salary, that's one way to cut, and I would ask the board to look into it, and the director to look at the contract, and I'd rather have staff or volunteers, I'd come and volunteer to go to a couple of branches and take care of the plants and water them on a weekly basis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Now we will move on to reports and correspondence. Start with the, let's see, a vote report, the questions from the numbers in the floor.
As far as the June numbers, uh, this is the set of financials that will go to audit that's happening in October. When that's concluded, the auditor will hold a meeting, you can ask questions, present the findings.
And that happens usually like in December, right? November, December or something?
I don't even.
Yeah. And Penny, is okay to have questions when looking through this information for the first time? And so, um, took me a couple of meetings to get my bearings on, um, all the documents that are provided. Um, but. So we have both, we've got June, then we have August financial reports, we've, or reports, we've got, it starts off with the, the summary of the accounts, and then there's a detailed listing of the, um, uh, accounts within there, that's kind of what follows behind the summary of documents. Anybody have any questions related to this? Alright, moving on then to the executive team report.
That's me.
I'm praying that Tiffany.
Oh, yeah, that's me, that's me. So, a few of the, the pieces that I want to focus on, um, one, I want to talk a little bit about One Read. So if you haven't signed up, you guys got books last time, but if you haven't signed up, there's still time to join the five hundred and eighty-three participants who joined the One Read Challenge to read the book Fahrenheit Four Fifty-One. Um, right now, that number is a sixty percent increase over twenty-twenty-four number. So, we're really excited about that, the team is doing a great job at the branches, as well as Maggie's team. Uh, the challenge is going to run through the end of October, so you still have time to read the book. And, uh, the challenge began with a launch party for more than three hundred participants over at Spencer Road, and, um, they had fun activities like, uh, fire performer, a bubble buzz, bounce house, a lot of fun things. So, we would be remiss if we didn't go ahead and take the time to thank the Friends of the Library who once again provided staff with the One Read t-shirt, as well as continuing to fund the additional Fahrenheit Four Fifty-One books that they do. So, shout out to Friends of the Library. And then to totally switch gears from One Read, is to talk a little bit about the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, RICA. The library team, Maggie and, uh, her team, I really want to make a point of thanking Becca Splain, who's our library services coordinator, really got the information and turned it around really quickly to get information out on the website, as well as do staff training and prepare for a town hall that L B and John have been very involved with. So we've partnered with Senator Hawley's office and State Representative Tricia Burns to offer local support for those who could benefit from the Radiate, Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. And if you want more information, it's on our website, there are links from our website to, um, the, where you need to go, uh, to find out for your eligibility, so all of that information is available. But we are going to be having a town hall information session here at Spencer Road Branch on October fourteenth from six to eight P M. So, feel free to come. And right now, what we're trying to offer to patrons is currently, they can print their forms at no charge at any of our branches, and can schedule one-on-one Ask Us appointments. And that's to help locate supporting documentation for proof of residency. So they're willing to help, they're ready, and they've been trained. We welcome anyone to come into our doors and get some help. And then I'm going to switch gears again, completely back to Shakespeare in the Park. We're going to sandwich it in with really big events. So, Shakespeare in the Park, we need to thank the Library Foundation for continuing to fund Shakespeare in the Park. It's the community event that we partner with St. Peters Parks, and it was, uh, a warm August evening when we, uh, we had, uh, three hundred and sixty people that traversed to the park to see the Shakespeare Tour Company perform a Midsummer Night's Dream. And participants also got to see the Bookmobile and talk to Bookmobile staff about what library services we have, so they learned about us while they got to enjoy the play. We also received a note from an attendee that, um, has been asked to share because it is a quite lovely story, but the attendee, Deborah, said what an, said after the event, "What an absolute delight that our library system made these actors and this play available to St. Peters residents. I have been a member of the Shakespeare Society since it first appeared as Art Hill. I used to love going to see the plays each summer, and then old age struck. Driving at night is hard for me now. I cannot express what it means to be able to see Shakespeare. I thank you with every part of my being for giving me this joy last summer and this summer. Next year, if you need any volunteers to help organize or help with this special gift, I would be happy to volunteer." Which is one of the best mission moments we could have. We now have someone who participated, and now wants to volunteer. So, that's very exciting, and kudos to everyone involved with that event. And we are going to be sharing more of these mission impact stories. We're calling it one story at a time moments, and we're going to be sharing them every month, and we're going to be sharing them on social media too, I understand. So, the next thing I get to skip over, because John's going to talk about it, which is the- So the next thing I get to skip over, because John's going to talk about it, which is the staff survey. So he's going to share more about that. But I do want to mention that September is library, National Library Card Sign Up Month. And so as part of the event earlier this month, Outreach Services welcomed 39 new library cardholders at a pop-up library at the Old Fallon Rail District Festival. So a partnership in the community and we have more library cardholders out of it, which is exciting. And next month, we're going to be able to share more in this report about the entire month, all the activities, how many library cardholders, there'll be a whole lot more. And also, I, I, I understand, I don't know, may or may not be true, I'm not sure, but I heard a rumor that a staff member is going to get to throw a pie in the face of John. So I don't know, we'll see. It sounds like a sweet deal.
Sounds sweet.
You're welcome. So very pun intended. So we'll make sure we get a lot of pictures and share it. And then my last announcement is for the Library Foundation's Imagine Gala. It's called Dracula's Ball this year. So we'd love for you to join us. It's on October 18th. Tickets are still available. Costumes are optional for this fantastic event. Come on!
First one was better. Sorry.
I tried.
A couple of questions for you. I, I saw the post related to the pie throwing. That was in an effort to get a thousand in a month? What was that? Is that right?
A thousand and then we increased it to, what was it increased to?
1,500.
1,500.
Okay, so what did we end up getting for the, it was for the month of?
You can't wait, can you?
Oh.
Till next month.
Oh, all right, sorry.
Do you know where we landed?
All right.
There will be a pie.
Yeah, so it was over a thousand.
Because we reached the second goal, there will be a second pie.
Oh, okay. Was there?
Or somebody at the back of the room.
Was there a?
Yes, I wish. It was 1531. I know that number by heart now.
She's getting a pie in the face as well.
Um, is that like a drawings, where you draw an employee out of the hat, kind of a deal to do it?
Yes, the employees that are doing, that get to throw the pies have been chosen.
Oh, they have been chosen. Ah, I see, all right, they're warming up in the bullpen.
Yeah.
Okay, um, uh, there was a pop-up tent at the Prairie Day. What kind of services are available at the, I was?
Well, here's the perfect question to talk about. Yes, hi.
Um, so what do we do at the pop-up libraries? Is that what you're asking for or?
No, 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 just at, at the tent, I don't know, is that, is that what it's considered a pop-up library?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what, yeah, what all happens there?
So it depends on the event, but in general at pop-up libraries, we sign people up for library cards. I think at the Prairie Day, we ended up having like 25 library card signups. And we talked to the community, the community members about different things that are going on at the library. And then depending on the event, like this one, we had like a little corn table that kids could play in while their, like, parents, like, ask us questions or talk. And so we usually, we share information about whatever is like going on in currently and like just general information as well. And honestly answer a lot of questions that people have or, um, this one, we were talking of the storybook walks a lot because it was nice weather outside and there was a lot of families. But it's just really to help overcome that like barrier of getting people to go into the branches to get a library card and be where, and, um, and be out there because like our statistics show that when people sign up for library cards at our outreach events, like 60% of them continue to use their cards after a year. And so it, it's, it's working. It's getting people, because once they have it, they come in. But I don't know how many people we have that say that like, "Oh, I've been meaning to get there, I've been here for three years and I just haven't got one yet." And I was like, "Well, guess what? Now all of you have one, all five of you here." So, um, yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right. John, for the survey results.
Survey, we have, have our new statistical report.
I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, and that's in our state of the library. We will hit that then.
All right, so we're going to, we're moving on to the statistical report then. Um, I just want to say, I, I know, first off, I know you, right? And I much like data. So I saw when these charts started growing, more, more, more metrics here, but I think they're, I, they're very helpful to see the trend, right? So I like that one stuff.
That was exciting. And I want to give a shout out to the team for putting together this new board report. I think it's a much more, it's easier to read because all those snapshots. And I saw Delore Beth, you know, it's a lot of this is just those great little pieces that surround the community, talk to our neighbors, talk to civic groups. Those, if you can remember one thing off this and say, "Hey, did you know that we have One Read Event Challenge coming up?" Or, you know, if you go to the very back of it and there's some upcoming events that you may want to get, you know, we have the gala coming up. The gala? So that's kind of what we're trying to highlight, a few things for, you know, the board, but also the community as a whole that we can kind of highlight and spot. So, I think it turned out really well. I really appreciate everybody's work on putting that together. Data, um, we are collecting more data and our team is doing a great job of putting it in what is usable form. And it's taking a lot of work, Brianna, it's put a lot of work, she went through the dashboards on us with the board review, I guess the last meeting, maybe it was two meetings ago. We also are posting all this data on the counties or on the library district's Intranet. So our staff can click on that at any time. And so we want to make sure that this data and the data we collect and the metrics that we're collecting is live and accessible for our team. And we're trying to figure out how we can make it easily accessible to the board in real time as well. But on the Intranet, currently it is available for our staff. Exciting things for me about this, if you look at our goal of your two months in, and so at two months in, we should be about 16 and a half percent, right? To get 12 months period to get to your goal. And so we looked at physical checkouts, we set a goal of 4,200 items. We're at 19% basically. So we're running ahead of that goal. Our digital checkouts, 1.8 million goal, 1.8 plus 4.2, 6 million. That was our kind of system-wide goal of 6 million in circulation. We're running right around 6.6, so right on target. So all checkouts is about 18.62 for that total goal of, of 6 million. Another one we really focused on is our, our visitors, that gate count number. We set the goal of 1.2 billion and we're running ahead of that. We're at 20% of that goal. Once again, if we're on target, it'd been around 16 and a half percent. So running ahead of that 1.2 million goal is, I think, just exciting news. Active cardholders, if you look at that, we're at right about 112,000. Our goal is to kind of stay around that 117, so that's not a growing goal. You have the base there. I feel like at where we were last year, we're at 108. So we're at 1, we got 4,000 more library cards than what we did last year. And someone mentioned, I got mine in my pocket here, my library card here. And one person had mentioned this to me that said, you know, we got 4,000 residents, 400,000 residents in our county, right? 420,000. This card is the, basically the entry pass of all the free stuff we have, all the good things that we have, the books, resources, programming. The only requirement is that you have a library card. It's exciting that we are at 112,000, that's a quarter. If you look at the room for growth and potential, it's, it is really, it is, we have room to go. Website views, you know, 539,000. Social media followers, 26, 27,000. I think it's all great stuff. If you look at the checkouts, the little pie graph on the bottom, the light pink is our e-media. So as we all know, that digital checkout does make up a significant amount of our overall, especially when you kind of see it in relationship to the branches. The highest level of checkout we have of physical media is at MK, so e-media is outpacing, you know, is truly that, another branch in operations. Programs held, 912, 921, again, we're slightly above the goal. And if you look at attendance, we're at 20% of our goal of having 1,000, 100,000 visitors to our program. So we're running ahead there. This 10-year history, I think that's a really kind of a nice snapshot. We'll talk about this a little bit later in the state of the library. But you, what you can see if you get nothing else out of this graph is you look at the dark purple and the light purple on fiscal year 16 through 26, and you can kind of see how that e-media has grown from, you know, around 10%, now it's 2.7% of our, our use.
What is the difference between the blue and the purple graphs? So this one and this one? Just one's 10 years, one's five years or six years?
That's it. And it's all it is.
Perfect.
That's the difference. So that is this fiscal report. I think, uh, excited to see that we've, we've hit goals, we're looking at data, we're collecting it, we're measuring ourselves to it, and we're hitting those milestones actually, those milestones that we're going to do as this year continues on full.
Just highlights, um, digital checkouts from last year is up 5%, almost 6%. And actual physical checkouts from last year at this time is down 3%. So we still have that and you can see it in the pie charts. You can see it, the e-media is, continues to expand over the physical checkouts. But what is exciting is to see even though that's happening, the gate count is up almost 6% from last year. So we're still getting people going into libraries.
For other reasons.
Right, right. And it looks like a lot of that is the programming. Programming attendance is up 21%. So, um, you know, that's, that's great. So excellent job to, to the staff and to John on that. Any other questions related to the statistical report? All right. Moving on, we will go to correspondence. As mentioned, we did have a letter from Mayor of St. Peters. We also have a letter from the City of St. Charles related to their proposed project. I will state that the, in both of these scenarios, there was a pilot, which is a payment in more taxes that was offered to the county, or to the library. So in the, in the instance of the City of St. Charles, I think 62,000 would have been the total amount we would have received from the project. And the pilot was for 31,000, half of that. So it was for 31,000, which is better than nothing. And then I don't recall on the St. Peters, because that was in last year's, um, that was in last month's packet, all the documents related to that. But still, we, I think we received about half, right? Is that right? Half of that one as well? So, um, any other questions related to those correspondence? All right. Seeing them, we'll move to minutes for approval. We have the draft minutes from August 19th. I'll entertain a motion for approval or acceptance of those. I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of those.
I move to accept those minutes as correct.
All right, we have a motion, it's our second.
Second.
Motion, it's our second, further discussion. Seeing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Keep your paws. Guys are going to have, the ayes do have it, the minutes are accepted. Next, we'll move on to the formal agenda. Uh, we have no unfinished business, new business, 2607 State of the Library presentation. Robin, can you set the timer for 10 minutes?
All right.
Should I pass those out? Not the honor, just that.
Yes, no. All right, State of the Library. So this is an annual report that we give, kind of, kind of highlight upon kind of where we, where we stand as a district. And I want to kind of, you know, we've done several things in the last six months and one of them was we changed our tagline. You know, and our tagline is now empowering minds and enriching communities and inspiring lifelong learning. And as we look at towards the future, we want to kind of keep those things in focus. That's really kind of some of our core values and core missions that we want to do here to assist our residents. We want to help them, enrich the community, inspire that lifelong learning. All right. State of the Library. A library's strength is built on dedicated staff delivering high-quality training services. In my six months here, I will tell you that we have some high-quality staff and they are passionate about what they do and they're also committed to serving the public. We strategically invest in high-demand materials to quickly serve our customers' needs, facilitate engaging programs that strike a balance between cost and attendance. And that is really the struggle that we've, we're focusing a lot on in this fiscal year is looking at the value of the program. And Maggie and I have had a lot of conversation about, can we bring in this contract reform or how much will that be on attendance? To make sure that we're finding that balance between the costs and attendance, to make sure that we're being smart and with the funding that we have and accountable to our taxpayers. We continue to expand library services everywhere to reach early childhood and senior audiences, increase bookmobile stops, further engage community partners to extend our reach while navigating increased budget pressures from inflation, rising healthcare costs, and that type of initiatives. And we heard a little bit about starting days. You know, our outreach services are not only, are they reaching out and partnering with the branches to extend and touch more, more of those touchpoints in the community, whether it be in early childhood centers or that be senior centers, send us, senior center and centers, or in the community where people are at. We're one and one, try to engage people at where they're at on a regular basis, get that touchpoint, get them a library card, remind them of what we're here for. About the library, established in 1973, merged with the county library with the city library. We're an independent political subdivision, you know, board of trustees, what, five appointments from the county or from the city. There are 9,248 public libraries in the United States. We are one of the third, we are the third largest district in Missouri and we are one of seven that serve over 200,000. We have 11 locations and the library, the new bookmobile. A map that highlights our locations throughout the county, the system really designed with the model that we have a branch within three to four miles of the most urbanized areas of the county. And you can see from the map of the circles that we really are covering the heart of St. Charles County with that, that coverage map. Our mission, we unite curiosity, build relationships, inspire growth, empowering those that we serve through literacy, learning and discovery guided by the principles of stewardship, accountability. We strengthen our community one story at a time. I like to say one library card at a time. And I'll tell my staff, one patron at a time, one family at a time. We need to take that time to really serve that customer that's in front of us. We get busy on a daily basis, but it's that, like that mission's focus story. It's that one person at a time that will come back and tell our good story to have a, you know, one of those on that, one story at a time. Vision, we aspire to be a vibrant and trusted resource that empowers individuals, enriches communities by nurturing a lifelong love of learning, literacy and personal growth. We are funded by our property tax, 95% of our revenue. Growth in revenue is kept by Hancock. Voter approved, 0.26 per hundred, as we talked about, we have rolled back by Hancock that to about 2.668. The last time we went to the ball initiative was 1994. Since then, we have opened six locations and added, doubling the size of the district overall. So that part about being responsible stewards. So we have been rolling back our revenue, our, our, our levy while opening up new locations. Definitely challenging as you look at the place, that district. Kind of put in perspective where we, where we stand with the other seven large districts. We've shown this map, this graph before, but we're at $56.90 per capita. If you look at Kansas City Public, they're 133. Look at St. Louis Public, 110. Mid-Continent, 77. St. Louis County, 75. 33% less than our here across the river. 50% less than the city of St. Louis.
Kansas City is laundering money.
Kansas City. I can go there. The address is very nice, by the way.
Yeah.
All right, when you look at efficiency of use of our tax dollars and the services delivered, we are doing a tremendous job. The other one is population served. You can see that we're serving around 420,000 people compared to the other districts. So once again, very good. The other number on there is number of branches, 11 branches we have compared to like Springfield Green that has 10. And even Springfield Green has more money per capita. Those that know me is, will know that I'm a competitive person. This graph hurts when I see that we're in last place on a per capita basis. Go back. All right. This slide, we talked about the, the top part of it, the fiscal year 16 to 26, that kind of divide between fiscal and e-media. We'll go through that again. Gate count, so if you go back from 2016 to 2026, you see that prior to 2020 COVID, we were seeing we were seeing a reduction in visitor counts. Now, we had a slight increase of that, um, after COVID and kind of bumped back. The trend that I don't like is if you look at that, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, slightly going down. So at our total gate count, where our goal is one point two million, that will stabilize us. But that's got to be our new base. From there, we need to increase gate count and get it back to closer to two million. And so when we look at the next ten years, we shouldn't be talking about a million or one thing too. We should be talking about, how are we going to get to two million? That's where we're headed. Same thing if we look at program attendance. COVID came. We bounced back, but we're at not near those pre-COVID levels. Same thing with program attendance. We kind of bounced back, but we brought back in the last year. So we need to kind of establish this year as our base and everything from this point is moving forward. We look at revenue versus operating expenses. This was a graph that, um, the former director, CEO put together. And the conversation that he would always have about this graph, he said that at some point, our revenue and our operating expenses, that those two lines were going to hit each other. And you could see that, you know, course of time, that its gap's got wider, smaller, wider, smaller. And twenty twenty-six, that gap is really, really close. You see that there? You got to ask yourself, what's in that gap? We're talking about revenue versus operating. What's not in there is capital. And so if you include our capital, that basic capital that we have, the replacing vehicles, roofs, very minor items, that's what's in that gap. Those lines essentially are touching each other in our twenty twenty-six budget. So that point of, we have to, of concern, we are there. This is a graph that looks at our FTE, so our staff count, the salary and benefits. Going back to twenty oh four to twenty twenty-six. The red line is the number of staff that we had. So if you look at twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and seventy-two staff. That number increased all the way up to two hundred and fourteen. And then our last year budget, it's down to a hundred and ninety-two. And you look at salaries, they really much stayed fairly consistent in growing up through twenty twenty. You had a kind of flat staff, um, salary and benefits line as the staff numbers dropped after the COVID. But then after that, you see in twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six, that's implementation of the new salary plan. And so staff will tell me, ask, catch me a lot of time in the branches and say, our branches don't feel like we have near enough staff. We don't have the staff that we used to have. And the answer is, that's correct. But there's no going back. We don't have the money, the staff, our branches at two hundred and fourteen people FTE. Those days are over unless we get additional revenue. So if you look at this graph, you can see those two lines collided, uh, in the last fiscal budget and we had to, to make the adjustment in order to get the budget balanced. And that's what those revenue to, uh, expense lines basically touching each other. Challenges facing the libraries we go forward, funding, ongoing legislative issues, raising healthcare costs and staff culture. These four items, as you look at the state of the library going forward and the challenges that we face, these are the items that we, we as a team are focused on. We as a team need to figure out how we're going to sell. Look at the financial challenges. So again, that gap, that difference in the twenty-six budget was one million, three hundred and fifty-eight. Capital costs were essentially one, three. And actual gap, they weren't really quite touching. We do have sixty-five thousand and buffer. That's not a lot of buffer. Now, people will say, well, you have money in the bank. Or maybe you should save money and build a branch out west. Problem is that even if someone gave us a building, we can't afford to staff it. We can't afford to put the books in the building because that gap is down to sixty-five thousand. Otherwise, we're spending on money that we don't have coming in on an annual basis. That's fundamentally the issue that we're struggling with. When people say, well, we need more staff. We have sixty-five thousand, I can buy maybe one more person. That's it. We don't have the money. Anticipated increases as we look at fiscal year twenty-seven, we just finished the twenty-six budget, it feels like. But we have to be thinking about the twenty-seven budget. Our health costs, care costs. We are looking at that contract currently. We renew that on a annual contract, not a fiscal year. The anticipated increase on healthcare costs is a hundred to four hundred thousand. That sixty-five thousand dollar gap we had just this year. That's the best case scenario. You look at SB one ninety, the senior citizen property tax raise, which is great that we, you know, have froze taxes for senior citizens. But it comes at a cost. That cost to us is eighty-four thousand to a hundred thousand. Again, that gap is not there. There's a talk about Senate Bill Three, which is a property tax that approved. If it is constitutional, there'll be a lot of legal challenges. There's a lot of talk about Senate Bill Three, whether it's constitutional, whether it's not constitutional. And it's got to go to the voters and the voters would have to approve a general property tax for everyone. The cost of that property tax is estimated to cost from the district, three hundred and ten to four hundred thousand. Again, that gap is not there. If you look at personal property, which there's a lot of folks that are talking about, hey, we shouldn't be taxed on our cars. We shouldn't be taxed on the boats. Once we paid, we paid sales tax when we purchased them. So why should I be taxed annually on that property that I've already paid sales tax? I get it. Fundamentally, it sounds like tax on a tax. That tax, if we eliminate it, um, which are bills that are being circulated that would do that in this coming legislative session, cost the district three point four to three point six million dollars. At that point, we are making hard choices. And a cost of living increase, which is, I think, the bare minimum we can offer our employees in twenty twenty-seven, will cost us four hundred thousand. Again, we're, you know, that gap is really, really small. So actions we're taking. In the twenty-six budget, we reduced the collection budget by nine percent. That was a hard decision. We reduced our capital spending by seventy percent. We reduced our FTE count by eight percent. We cut sixteen staff out of the budget. We're continuing to find efficiencies without closing branches. We're committed that our branches are the lifeblood of our district. They deliver the services. We are going to keep our branches open. That's a must. Maintaining strong investment employees through training, professional development and skill building initiatives. We need to continue to grow our employees so they're able to deliver those high quality services. Can we ever think about what that next step is? And if we ever get to the position where we want to ask the voters for our tax increase? We have to be doing a high quality job. Someone will give you money if you do a great job. They're definitely not going to give you money if you do a bad job. Uh, we're evaluating our staff requirements at patron service points and during hall peak hours. So do we need, how many people do we need at a desk? Do you need the same number of people at a desk at twelve o'clock versus three o'clock versus five o'clock versus seven o'clock? How do we make the most efficiency of our staffing and the staffing model that we have in place? We're adjusting our collection budget allocations to reduce spending on high cost per circulation digital materials. We all know that hoopla and libby have cost. Carol and her team are going through on a daily basis. We're carefully monitoring this to ensure that our digital costs stay in check and on budget. Developing the plan to increase the library's reputation and community organization, civic groups and clubs. Just like we want our outreach to be out to the early childhood centers, senior centers and in the community. We want our leaders within this organization to have those touch points within the community to make those relationships. We are strengthening our partners with community organizations to expand programming. We're identifying niche opportunities for the library services to special connect community needs, such as the Radiation Exposure Conversation Act, the memory lab and what have you. Heading into twenty twenty-seven budget, I think we're going to further need to cut all our collection budget. Not keep it flat, but probably look at a two and a half percent reduction in order to be able to get us in position where we can offer employees a full raise. I think we're, we're going to look at further opportunities to reduce our headcount, potentially as high as three percent. Each of those staffing requests, when a position comes empty, we're looking very seriously whether we can afford to fill the position and what would be the impact of service if we don't fill that position. This is a lot for staff to absorb. Understanding that we're going to maintain high quality service, we're going to maintain our branches being open, but we're, we're at a point we have, we are expecting more of them. And a lot of staff are working very, very, very hard. So expecting more is difficult and we know that and I appreciate the work. But we're trying to navigate that and improve the culture and then make sure that they feel, that they recognize that their efforts are appreciated. And so we are doing a survey, we're doing it quarterly. We're trying to do the best to address the issues that are brought up and respond to the issues that are brought up and their comments. And then their responses, our first one had open ended question, the one that we did in May. And then the August one is just kind of a fast check, three or four questions. But you can see overall, in that, that three month period, out of the four categories, we were slightly up. Out of three, out of four. Some people tell me I should think that, take that as a win. I take it as a loss. And we, we didn't make ground. It's, it's basically the same. So do I feel good about our, our, that we have good to very good one up, one point five percent? Sure. I feel good about, but not enough to make me get excited. I'll be excited when those numbers are much higher than what they are and any of these results. But we are going to continue to focus on it and make it a priority. So we, we are really focused on this, the staff culture of creating a positive environment where people thrive and our Michigan flourish. And some of the actions we're taking is that we had moved forward with the branch operation administrator. This role is a, is a new role, as we talked about. This role will really be that liaison between central services and our branch staff. It's going to make our presence in the branches stronger, it's going to help us be more responsive to the needs of the branches. And as someone has told me, we need to act like one library with many branches. And right now, we're kind of acting like mini libraries. Each building next is almost a standalone library. But we are one library with many branches. We're moving forward with our employment, development and workplace culture co-leads. This is where we basically have, are asking employees to take on additional responsibility for a slight increase in pay, five percent bump. It is a one year and a two year term, so it's rotating. And we're really focusing that team to look at how do we improve employee, and the employee onboarding process, develop manager training and promote professional development and collaboration. I've also asked Tiffany to take on additional responsibility and focus heavily on that employee development and workplace, place culture while continuing to lead our core administrative function. So Tiffany is really diving hard into a lot of the details. What is a good onboarding practice? How can, and what will her relationship be with the co-leads? And how can she direct and lead that team to really move us forward of having, when we bring someone on, they're bringing them on to a professional organization and it's consistent among all of our branches. And then, uh, something that came out time and time again is that I've heard that new CEOs or admin team, you say you're going to be in the branches and we see you for the first month. We see you for the second month. By time it gets to month six, we no longer see you. And so I've asked Robin and we are committed, say I'm going to be in the branches, ten percent a week. So four hours a week, um, whatever the branches need me to do. I said that could be working to drive it through. It could be stacking books. It can be whatever they need me to cut out. I'm there for different branches, going to be visible, going to be present and available, not just popping in, popping out. So that staff has that opportunity to interact and engage and hopefully, uh, increase that presence. That's our focus as we move forward going into fiscal year twenty-seven. We're here to serve the public, um, and look forward to it. Tomorrow, I get to go to fiscal branch and get a pie in the face by a staff member. Look forward to that. Asia agreeing as well. As when we hit a thousand, we reset the goal to fifteen hundred. And Asia is also, uh, going to get a nice lovely pie in the face of her.
Oh, I got to pick the pie, but no one's going to.
With that, I'd be happy to answer questions. Um, I do have one, I want, do have some good news I wanted to point out. Is that when we looked at this year's budget, um, fiscal year twenty-six, we talked about setting this tax rate at sixteen sixty-eight. Our budget was based on sixteen forty-five. So that's ninety-eight thousand dollars difference. We'll actually have, uh, that gap, sixty-five plus the ninety-eight. So we're at a hundred and whatever that is, sixty-two. Maybe that'll be enough to cover our healthcare costs increase. We'll find out more, um, as we close out this year.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Any questions?
A question, was the nature of this staff survey just multiple choice answers? Or were there places for people to actually write comments? Specifically if they rated something particularly low in the state? I know it's anonymous, but give reasons why they rated it so low.
Yeah, so the first one we did, we had a series of, you know, check the box, but they're also open ended questions.
Okay.
And that really has driven a lot of our decisions of what we need to do. We've moved, talked about moving away from the regional structure into a branch as a branch. That came out of a result of that survey. The idea of having a administrator of branch operations was one of the kind of suggestions from that survey. So there are things that were brought up that we're actively acting upon. The second one, so we won't have people go through and fill out that, all those things again where they feel like, okay, I gave you all of this input. Three months later, I don't see that you did anything. Well, a lot of these things are going to get kind of difficult.
Right.
And so I didn't want to have people then feel like they needed to restate it because they weren't heard the first time. So what we're going to do on the quarterly ones is they will just be four, five, yes, no, A, B, C type questions. And then annually, we'll go back and do a more depth one to see if we made any headway on some of those more detailed issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
John, what, what has technology got in your future? If you have to at some point start leaving in those considerations?
Technology as in in the, the digital books?
And AI.
And AI. Well, digital media, I think that we'll concede in twenty-seven budget that we'll probably have to allocate more resources from digital to digital. We need to make sure that we, our patrons that choose to use a digital media are not waiting excessively long for materials. And Carol's doing a great job of managing that currently. So we want to make sure we have high quality services while the people come to the branch. They check out physical material, they check out digital material. The use of AI. Google and those platforms, I don't see that changing us immediately. Because, you know, if you wanted a quick answer and you wanted to do something on Google, you could do that for years. AI has made it a little bit easier because it makes the process, you know, maybe a little smoother. But you still, the reason you come to libraries, either you want to get into the deep research, which we have the databases that help support, or you're coming here for that kind of the more community event. On reading for recreation, uh, you know, and learning, discovery and that continuing growth. So I think you have different audiences that are looking for something, you know, a quick answer on AI or someone that actually wants to come in and learn and explore.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, John, for that presentation. Twenty-one minutes. All right, next. Well, it's only six when you told me. So, uh, next, uh, order of business we have is a twenty-six oh eight election of officers. Didn't hear anything from anybody, um, in relation to their interest in new positions. I think last meeting was a question of the folks who are currently serving. So I'm currently the president, Justin is the vice president, Cindy is our secretary and Buddy Arden is our treasurer at the moment. Are all of them two, two years?
They are. And we are all in our first year.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion, however you want to handle, um, slate of, of folks. If there's an individual who's interested and wants to nominate someone for these positions, um, I'll leave it up to the floor. Yes, sir.
I move that the current.
I move that the current slate of officers be renewed.
Second. All right, there's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, is there a roll call vote needed on this one?
I can do a roll call vote.
I don't know that I want one. All right, all those in favor say aye. Get opposed. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. The officers will be retained for next year, and then next year, there will have to be changes made. So be thinking about what you'd like to do on this for next year, please. All right, the next item we have before us is twenty-six oh nine, Resolution twenty-six dash zero two in honor of Renee Tillman. I will go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Renee Tillman has distinguished herself through service to the St. Charles City County Library District as an appointee from St. Charles County to the Library Board of Trustees from November twenty twenty to August twenty twenty-five. And whereas Renee Tillman participated in and contributed to review and approval of the library's Destination twenty twenty-seven Strategic Plan, launch of the library's Bookmobile in twenty twenty-two, establishment of a temporary Mid Rivers Mall location in twenty twenty-four, and renovations at the St. Spencer Road and Midendorf Cradell branches in twenty twenty-four. And whereas Renee Tillman served as an advocate for the library district and was committed to the advancement of the library district and the services provided to its customers. And whereas Renee Till, Renee Tillman's thoughtful approach to major decisions impacting library service helped to ensure wise action on the part of the library board. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of this, of the St. Charles City County Library District hereby recognizes and conveys its gratitude to Renee Tillman for her exemplary service as a member of the Library Board of Trustees and for her dedicated service to the St. Charles City County Library District and all the taxpayers of St. Charles County. The Board wishes her the best in future endeavors, resolved and passed this thirtieth day of September twenty twenty-five. St. Charles County has received that. Renee, would you like to say anything?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I want to thank you guys for the privilege and the honor to serve. Our St. Charles County has an amazing library, all the sites, the staff, an amazing board. John, I didn't get too much opportunity to work with you, but I have been second in the staff, and I hear you are accurate and phenomenal. I am beyond blessed with this opportunity to serve. And when things go down for me, as you guys know, that's been possible at the Y and C A, but I'd be, I'd be honored to do it again. It was really a pleasure. I mean.
Thank, thank you so much, Renee. It was, it was definitely a pleasure serving with you. I think in the way that our, our seats mapped out, I sat next to you most of the time when we were over across at Spencer, Spencer Branch, and a lot of very knowledgeable insight and your experience that, you know, you bring, you, you brought to this board from, you know, your experience at the Y was, was greatly appreciated and I think helped kind of give us some perspective on how we moved forward, some of the challenging decisions that were have to be made. So I can't thank you enough for kind of some of the information that you helped kind of me see the light on, on a couple of things and appreciate your input.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Likewise.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
President, I move that Resolution twenty-six dash zero two in honor of Renee Tillman be adopted.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I can do a roll call vote, please.
David Zucker?
Aye.
Buddy Harden?
Aye.
Richard Gardner?
Aye.
Cindy Giordano?
Aye.
Justin Collier?
Aye.
Matthew Seeds?
Aye.
Penny Henke?
Aye.
Dan Montenack?
Aye.
Keith Hazelwood?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, resolution is adopted. Thank you again, Renee, appreciate your service.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, the final item on our agenda tonight under new business is setting of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rate. Is there any discussion when we end that? I'll entertain a motion to set the tax rate at point one six six eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Need a roll call on this. Well, let's do a roll call on this.
David Zucker?
Aye.
Buddy Harden?
Aye.
Richard Gardner?
Yes.
Cindy Giordano?
Aye.
Justin Collier?
Aye.
Matthew Seeds?
Aye.
Renee Tillman? I'm sorry. Boy, that's a. Penny Henke? Penny Henke? Dan Montenack?
Aye.
Keith Hazelwood?
Aye.
All right, the tax, yeah, the tax rate passes. That's our final item for tonight. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Guys?